The Stillwater Planning Commission meeting of May 3rd will come to order. I'll explain the process for this evening. I will say that there is a sign-up sheet at the podium, so if anyone wants to speak, if you haven't already signed up, if you would please do that, that'll help us kind of run a little bit more orderly this evening. So it'll be the process to call for items on the agenda. The commission will hear briefly from staff first, then the applicant and/or their representative will speak next, then we can open the public hearing and hear from those in favor and/or in opposition to the request. When you come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. Before closing the public hearing, both staff, applicant, and/or their representative will be provided an opportunity to respond, to provide additional information, and answer questions. After all interested parties have spoken, the public hearing will be closed, and then we will hear remarks and alternatives from staff. And I'll just go ahead and tell you that when we do have a lot of citizens that want to have input, like we do this evening, we want to make sure everyone gets the opportunity to be heard, and as I said, there's a sign-up sheet. Each speaker gets one turn at the podium, where we'll ask that you limit your speaking time to five minutes or less. Try not to repeat what previous speakers have said. If you have something to add to a previous point, please feel free to do so. However, merely repeating the same thing over and over does not advance the dialogue and takes time away from other speakers who may have something new to say. With that, we'll call for the first item on public hearings, and that's map amendment, MA 22-4.
Hi, Challenger School, which I'm from.
Yes, city staff. You all see that? Yeah, we're good, okay.
I can't hear.
Oh. Okay. This is a map amendment at 1924 1930, 2002 East McElroy Road, requesting to go from RSL to RSS, map amendment 2204. The purple hatched area shows the proposed re-zoning location. It's located north of McElroy and west of Jardoe. The site is approximately four acres. Here's an aerial map. The boundary is shown in yellow. There are two residential structures on-site with an undeveloped lot in between. Street view looking at 1924 East McElroy. This parcel is approximately one acre in size. 1930, this is the undeveloped parcel. It's approximately three-quarters of an acre. And 2002 East McElroy is approximately two and a half acres. Looking at the zoning map, it's currently zoned RSL and abuts RSL to the north and west. Across McElroy to the south is RSS, and on the east, it abuts commercial shopping. Looking at the future land use map, we're on the east side of the city, and this area was projected to be commercial at the time of the comprehensive plan. Are there questions for staff before open public hearing? Any questions from the commissioners? I don't see any, thank you. At this time, we'd like to ask the applicant and/or their representative to come forward if they'd like to speak. Be sure and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Safe Aldina Lucy. I go by Safe just to make it easy for everyone to meet me. The address is going to be 2002 East McElroy, here in Stillwater. So I just wanted to address first that, you know, we're very happy and excited to be here in Stillwater. This is a new venture for us, but y'all have a special place in my heart because the Roy family behind me that's here tonight, they actually helped raise my mom, so I'm grateful for their service and what they've done for the community. That being said, what we're trying to do is we're hoping for 5,000 square foot lots, keeping it residential in that area, and we're trying to just make sure to keep it a family environment for single-family homes. We're not looking for apartments, we're not looking for commercial. We just need to adjust the size of the units to kind of mirror the development that's directly across the street from us, so that this way we can continue to grow Stillwater in the right way and, you know, fulfill a need here in Stillwater, so. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer tonight, and don't know what else y'all would like from me.
Any questions from the commissioners? I don't see any, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in favor of this item? If you would come forward at this time? In favor? If you're in favor, you'd like to speak in favor of the item?
Since we have no position in favor or against it, just want you to give some clarification on it, just to speak.
Why don't you, since you're neutral, why don't you come forward, and we'll find out what your questions are at this time.
My name is Larry Roy, Lawrence Roy. I'm, excuse me, Lawrence Roy, Lawrence Felix Roy's son. We are current owners of the property straight north of the proposed properties that's under And this is my first city council meeting, so I don't know your protocols necessarily, but we-
Well, and that's okay, this is the planning commission.
Okay, the planning commission.
Yes.
We had just a few concerns about how this was going to transpire. One of them, I think if I understand correctly, has been addressed, and that is the size of the lots. I understood Mr. Lucy to say that these would be approximately the same as the properties that are straight south across McElroy. If I understood that properly, then I think I have a clear understanding of that. I didn't hear clearly how many lots he expected to develop in this area. Was that mentioned, or did I just imagine that? The primary concerns that we had were related to the developments and how that would affect our property with water runoff, and in particular, all of those, you can't tell it from the maps, but those go downhill onto my dad's property. We would want to be certain that the water runoff was not going to make that area into a marsh or a pond, or have damaged the property, dad's property, which is straight north of there. That property straight north is currently zoned as agricultural. The other concern that we had is, is this going to affect or change the zoning for that piece of property straight north? On the map, I'm talking about the long area of land that's, that looks rectangular, running east and west.
Okay, with the frontage on Jardoe?
There is frontage on Jardoe, yes.
That would be-
That's correct, ma'am.
This piece here?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, very good.
I think Mr. Lucy addressed me before the meeting and reassured me that this was not going to be a multifamily dwelling, so because of that, we don't object to the development. We just want to make sure that our properties are protected and not affected by any of the secondary effects of the buildings going on there. Do you, the question about whether the straight south is zoned the same?
So are those your questions?
Yes.
Okay, do you have any other questions?
I guess the only other question is, is there a minimum square footage on the homes that are expected to be built there?
And I'm sorry, did you, I'm sorry, I don't think we got your address for the record here.
It's 1819 Linda.
Okay.
So he actually lives north of that area that you-
Thank you so much. Okay, so for, yeah, so for your questions, what we'll do is we'll answer those questions when we have staff come back.
Okay.
And when the applicant gets an opportunity to come back, right before we close the public hearing, after we hear from everyone.
Okay, thank you for hearing me.
You bet. Okay.
I hope I remember them all.
It's just two.
Okay.
So what he asked is, is he understands that for the zoning proposed, that it's 5,000 square foot for a lot?
Right.
With the four acres, how many number of lots could go on that property?
It depends on how they decide to lay it out, and streets and everything, but yeah, with the minimum, I think it's, comes to, if you take like 20% out as general rule for streets, it might be 18 lots, I think, something like that. Doing math in my head here.
It's four. It's four acres.
And the 5,000 is the minimum, so they could do larger lots than that.
But that, but 5,000 would be your worst-case scenario?
Right.
As far as density goes?
Correct.
The most dense that it could be.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're saying 18?
I think so. I can grab a calculator and do the math, for sure.
Eight per acre? Eight per acre? How many acres?
It's four.
Four times eight would be 32, subtract 20%, so you're talking more like 25.
So we may, what we might do is just ask, ask staff if you could kind of run those numbers before we close this evening, close this hearing?
Yeah.
That would be good.
And then the other question was about stormwater?
So yeah, so the other question was about stormwater runoff?
Yeah, so Stillwater code, and as is common everywhere else in Oklahoma, you cannot increase runoff from the pre-development stage. So however they engineer the site, they will have to ensure that it does not run off on any other properties.
All right, thank you. Okay, at this time, I would again ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the item? And if not, we will ask for those that are opposed, and Chelsea, I believe you have that list. Oh, I have, oh, I have the list, thank you. Okay. First one on the list is Jaclyn Morrison.
Yes, thank you for having me. My name is Jaclyn Hooper Morrison.
Can you just get a little closer to the microphone? You might bend it a little bit more to you, and be sure and give us your address, please.
Okay, my name is Jaclyn Hooper Morrison. I own the three and a half acres to the east of the Wilson Prior Estate, and I'm a definite no against the rezoning. The reason being, to rezone the large lots to two single lots for housing would stick out like a sore thumb, because it would not be conducive to the environment of the homeowners that are already there. I've owned my three and a half acres for, in the 50s, and I like the neighborhood, I like the conducive of it, and I don't like the structure. I want to keep the structure as is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Morrison, real quick, can you tell me your address again?
Let's see, I'm, okay, 20, what, you want my home, or you want there?
Excuse me, the property that you own?
I own the three and a half acres on the corner of McElroy and Jardoe. And I have one lot, or one home there, and it's just one home on a large lot. And I don't like the environment, I want to keep the environment conducive to it. I don't want to see a lot of little smaller homes that will stick out like sore thumbs, because as respect to all of the neighborhoods, a lot of them have been there for a very long time.
What, and I'm sorry, Ms. Morrison, what's your address, where you reside?
2212 East Sixth Avenue in Stillwater, Oklahoma.
Thank you.
As well as, but I also live in Houston, Texas.
Okay.
But everything's here.
Okay.
But I'm a definite no. Thank you.
Thank you this evening. Next on the list, JR, and I'm going to go with Reeves?
That's you?
That's you, okay.
You're with the next item, okay.
So would Aaron Reeves be with the next item as well? Okay. And then Marshall Walker is the next one on the list, and that's with you as well. Jimmy Hill, you're with the next one, all right. Lawrence Roy, and you already spoke, okay. So do we have anyone else this evening that wants, would like to speak in opposition on this item that did not already sign up? Anyone else in the audience? Okay? You could state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's, oh, I think, okay, there goes the microphone. My property is 823 North Street. It's the long rectangular lot with frontage on skyline to the northeast of the proposed property. And Mr. Lucy had approached me three or four months ago about buying a approximately one acre parcel of my property, for the purpose, I presume, of including it in this rezoning. So I just have some concerns about his intentions as far as what that property was going to be used for, and whether or not this would be the extent of this rezoning, and whether this, you know, this development would continue to grow, or whether it would be limited to this four acres. So I wouldn't want it to, as someone had previously voiced, take over this neighborhood, which is mostly like 50s, 60s, and 70s ranches on very large lots. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition of this item? Okay, seeing none. This time, we'll have staff come back and give us alternatives.
I will say to you, any plating will have to come back to you, so you'll see the lot layout and road layout, and ultimately lot count. So our findings on this is, the land development code allows for rezoning of land via map amendments. The proposed small lot, single-family zoning district is located directly to the south across McElroy Road, and the comprehensive plan calls for commercial uses in this area. Alternatives, accept the findings and recommend approval as requested. You can find the request is not appropriate and recommend denial, or find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation, and table the request to a date certain.
I do have just a couple of questions, just to kind of follow up on some of the comments that we got. So I think one of the, one of the parties in opposition had inquired about the extent of the zoning, so just to confirm, the extent of the zoning is the four acres?
Right.
It's nothing else?
Right.
So any, anything that would be in addition to that would be a separate action that would have to come before the city?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Does any, any of the commissioners have any other questions of staff? All right, thank you so much. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to commissioners for comment, discussion, or a motion.
Do you think it's reasonable to state that if someone had come to us and wanted to zone this commercially, we'd look at the future plan and go, oh, that's what the plan is, therefore, we would probably be okay with that?
I would, speaking, yes, I would if, yeah, if someone came to us and we looked at this, and it was a commercial zoning, and because that's the comprehensive plan, McElroy is an arterial, Jardoe is an arterial as well, both of those, you would think that close to that corner, that this would be something where you'd have higher traffic, and you would think of that going to commercial, which is, I think, why it was set up that way. I also know that we've recently been looking at some areas that comprehensive plan that was set roughly 20 years ago, and some things have developed a little bit differently than the comprehensive plans, so I think that's been part of our discussion in some of our recent motions and actions.
Yeah, I was, I brought that up because I thought if, if the concerns that were raised about it going to RSS, I would estimate would be less of a concern than if it had gone to commercial.
I had, I share your thought, I had the same thought, looking at this in preparation for the meeting.
Well, this would represent a big change from the, is it C3 or G3, the comprehensive plan?
Comprehensive plan, so what it is, the ask here is to, asking to go to something that is a little bit more dense, a little bit more higher traffic than is current, but not as high traffic as perhaps a commercial might be.
So it would, it seems to me that this kind of a change would preclude ever going to commercial.
Well, ever's a long time.
Well, how about in our lifetimes? I can't imagine someone dividing it up and building houses and then going. So it does represent a change that is, I guess, how would you state it, goes against the comprehensive plan? Not that that's bad, but that is what it seems to represent to me.
Well, my experience has been that the comp plan is a living document, evolves, so I don't know that that's a reason to preclude looking at residential zoning along here, even though it's more dense than what the current residential zoning exists.
There's nothing to say that in the future, you might not have neighborhood commercial?
Nearby, I suppose.
As was, as was laid out on the comprehensive plan. Any other discussion, or perhaps a motion?
I'd make a motion that we accept the findings and recommend the city council, the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes unanimously, so the item will move forward to the city commission. Next item on the agenda is another map amendment, and this is map amendment 22-03.
All right, Kelly Griscoll, Johnson and Associates, acting as city staff. Map amendment at 2810 South Western Road, going, the request is to go from RSS to CG, map amendment 22-03. The purple area shows the rezoning location. It's approximately 3.6 acres of a larger parcel located west of Western and south of 26th Avenue. There's an aerial map. The property is bordered in red. There is some oil and gas infrastructure in the area, you can kind of barely see it on the aerial here. There's some tanks in the northwest corner of the site, and a pump jack abutting on the west property border. And a street view looking from Western West at the property. The zoning map, the property is currently zoned RSS and surrounded by RSS on all sides except for south, where it abuts agricultural. And we're in the southwest quadrant of the city here, on the future land use map, and at the time, on the west side of Western, it was predicted to be low-density and high-density on the east side. Are there any questions of staff?
I don't see any.
Okay.
At this time, I would ask if the applicant would like to come forward and speak to commission, make any remarks.
I'm Jimmy Hill, 2700 South Western, the applicant. I would mention Johnson and Associates has made a good review, and I'd like to provide a little more information about some of the points that they have brought up. First, concerning the city comprehensive plan, the 2030 comprehensive plan adopted by the city, April 1st, 2013, anticipated likelihood of some limited commercial development in this area. This may be seen on the 2030 land use map in Chapter 10 of the comprehensive plan, which was indicated on the map that you had there earlier. Our track adjoins a larger track on the south, which is agricultural. That zoning, as you know, permits a wide range of uses, including mobile home parks and so forth, so it's not that we're up against a residential area on that side. Adjacent landowners, we've contacted the adjacent landowners with a description of our plans for a mini-storage. We've had no objections to our proposals. The two subdivisions, which both were not indicated on the map, but you may be well aware, everything on the east side of Western, across from this property, is being developed into small-unit residential lots. In fact, we're told that these tracks being developed include a total of 529 residential lots. We believe our proposed miniStorage would be very compatible with this development and provide convenient, attractive storage. Setbacks were mentioned in the Johnson and Associates report. We have noted those, and there will be no problem with complying. Concerning the existing oil well, anticipating future potential, some years ago, I had done some earlier research related to this old existing well. Current city code was adopted June 20, 2015, specifically excluding these older wells. On December 18, 2018, Mr. Lance Gross, then Development Services Director, confirmed to me by email that the new regulations did not apply to the old wells, and suggested my contacting the Corporation Commission for state regulations. We've done so, and at the site plan stage, if the rezoning were to be approved, the site plan will ensure that the required distances will comply with Corporation Commission regulations with respect to that existing well, as recommended by Mr. Gross. If there's any question, I'll try to respond. If not, we do have another speaker who represents the people who plan to purchase this track and develop a miniStorage facility. Other questions?
Any questions from the commissioner? Thank you very much, Mr. Hill.
Thank you.
So at this time, I would ask if there's anyone that wants to speak in favor, and I'm going to guess that's one of the Reeves?
Marshall Walker, 3705 South Woodstone. Our request is consistent with the objectives of the city comprehensive plan with regard to lessening traffic impact and improving the quality of life. Access to self-storage options in Stillwater is limited by both distance and capacity, which increases traffic congestion, reduces convenience for our citizens. We all know that the population growth down the Western corridor has increased greatly in the last few years, okay? And the current planned growth with the addition of these two large neighborhood developments will exacerbate this problem. This, inarguably, will create an increased traffic impact in the area, and even with the eventual expansion of Western from a two-to-four lane road, there will still be a significantly greater impact. Self-storage industry standards say that most people utilize storage within one mile of their home, and the nearest one to this area is about three miles away, okay? So therefore, these nearby residents will have to travel further towing trailers across town to store their belongings, which would also create a greater traffic impact. Compared to most other commercial uses, self-storage are a low-traffic operation. Most individuals seldom access their units, so the addition of a close, convenient self-storage facility could help to reduce the traffic impact by allowing people to store closer to their homes. This will help lessen the traffic impact now and in the future with other developments down Western Road. So also with me today is JR and Aaron, and they're going to speak about a few of the other points that we have.
Mr. Walker, I don't know, did we get your address? Okay, I'm sorry, just didn't hear it.
Woodstone.
Okay.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Are there any questions from the commissioners? All right. All right, thank you.
All right, good evening. Thanks for having us. My name is Aaron Reeves, 3116 West Shiloh Creek Avenue. Marshall pretty much covered everything. I just wanted to make sure, this is really from my wife, that she said, make sure they know that we're not going to make an ugly storage unit. So I just, I don't know if you guys would want kind of a copy of some rough renderings. This is not exactly what it looked like, but we want to give an idea for you guys to understand that we want to keep a natural landscape, and I can, you guys want these?
Yeah, give it to Chelsea, please. Thank you.
You know, the goal and the hope is that it's hidden away and tucked back to where it's not an eyesore, and it's not something that you don't want to look at when you're driving by. I drive down that road three or four times a day, so I definitely want to make sure that it's aesthetically pleasing and we're not taking away too much of the environment from it. There is going to be to the, to the west, there's still going to be lots of, there's a pond back there and lots of landscape and all that stuff. So really, just trying to give you an idea that we're not just going to throw up a bunch of concrete buildings and take our money and run. We live in Stillwater, our businesses are down the road from that, and we drive by it every day and want to be proud of what we built and put in there. I don't know if you have any questions or if that helps?
Any questions from the commissioners?
So I imagine a place like this is open 24 hours a day?
Uh, yeah, it could be.
Maybe people could come in there any time of the day?
Yeah, I mean, they'd be like secure access to it. Yep, as far as like being a tenant of the property or the renter from the storage unit.
And lots of security cameras?
We sure hope so. Yes, sir. All right.
All right, and any other question?
Thank you for your time.
How you guys doing?
We're good.
I'm JR Reeves. I live at 2008 South Avondale, here in Stillwater. Been here since 92. And what I just wanted to emphasize, just how, I saw a need a couple, several years ago, but right now, like last year, I was trying to get a place to, to get rented out of storage units, and there was not, out of all the storage units in Stillwater. And I have several friends that have units. They had no occupancy. It was 100% full totally. We had to go to Perry to, and there was only one unit in Perry, and it was a five by seven, and it was really the pits. But it met our need for right what we needed. But the drive over to Perry was an hour and a half, you know, by the time you get there, back up, load up and everything, it's an hour, it's an hour drive totally, you know, to get everything there. So this is something that would definitely benefit the southwest side of Stillwater, and we'd just go from there. And you can see that we really do want to make it a nice, Western is a very busy road. It's going to get busier, and if you looked across the street, there's almost 500 homes that are going to be built in there, so it's, it's, it's needed. Any questions for me?
Sure, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I did ask if it was going to be open 24 hours. Is it, lighting, they're probably going to be lighted too.
Oh, absolutely.
24 hours.
Yeah.
Do you see any issues with lighting?
I think we can get the lighting to where it's down in, in the lanes of the storage units and not bothering the other neighborhoods.
Okay, so you do make provisions for it?
Absolutely. But we do want it lit, you know, especially at the gate and access for, down the lanes of the buildings.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe that's all this, all of the requested speakers that we have. At this time, I will ask if there are any other speakers in the audience, anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask staff to return and give us alternatives.
So the findings, the land development code allows for rezoning of land via map amendments. The proposed commercial general zoning district is not located anywhere nearby. The comprehensive plan calls for low and high-density uses in this area and indicates that neighborhood-scale commercial may be found in low-density at a, on a limited basis. Alternatives are accept the findings, recommend approval as requested, or find the request is not appropriate and recommend denial, or find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a date certain.
Thank you.
Questions?
You have, you have questions of staff?
Yes.
Okay.
So I guess this is considered, what did you call it, community scale commercial?
Neighborhood scale.
Neighborhood scale.
This is considered neighborhood scale. And the experience with Stillwater, this, this fits that designation and?
I didn't catch that last part, I'm sorry.
Your experience in Stillwater, this does, is an appropriate designation of it, is community-scale commercial?
The size of the parcel kind of limits the intensity, yeah.
And the plans, okay. And some of the description here, I had a, well, the, the issue of the, well, it looked, there are tanks there, you can see them. I don't know if there's a well anymore. You can't see.
Right, I don't know the status if they're abandoned or plugged.
You can see it out there from the southwestern. You can see the pump jack.
Right, right.
So there's, are there any issues in regard to the existing oil tanks and the well?
I don't know if legal staff can weigh in on the separation.
I, I will say, my understanding is, as Mr. Hill said, that any oil wells that are within the city limits that were in production prior to the ordinances going into place are excluded, and so I will ask for counsel to just confirm that.
Yeah. Yeah, they appear to be a non-conforming use because they're in an RSS district, which technically is not allowed at the time, so it, it would have come into being well before the area was even zoned RSS.
Oil wells aren't allowed in RSS?
Correct.
There's one like three blocks from us.
I know, I'm sure, I'm sure it exists.
And that, I mean, I think that that's what we're saying this evening is, is it doesn't, it's not allowed to be, to go in and drill into an existing RSS today.
Okay, you've got to go lateral.
But if it was pre-existing, it's grandfathered in.
Right.
But I mean, it still stands, does this conflict at all with what the plans are for this area? Is there any?
From a land use perspective?
Yeah, is it, is it, I don't know, I guess you just leave it up to the developer?
I mean, you're not going to have people, you know, residing there or even office-ing there for long periods of time, so I don't know that there's a concern from that perspective.
You can't conceive of any reason why there should be a conflict between mini storage and the oil wells then?
Right.
Any other questions for staff?
This might be rather speculative, but given the existence of the pump jack there and that it's non-conforming, although it's been grandfathered in, is it rather unlikely that it would be developed as residential?
Well, I don't know if you can weigh in on that as far as new residential coming in where there is a grandfathered, non-conforming use.
I, I would think if we could, could you pull back up the comprehensive plan so we could take a look? That might help us discuss this a little bit.
That one? Oh, the comp plan?
Yeah, the comp plan.
I'm sorry, I thought you.
There we go.
It's a low, low-density residential, okay. Big lot, 10,000 square foot lot. Low-density is 10,000 square foot lot.
As far as the comp plan is concerned?
No, no, but I, and one of the earlier things we saw, it said low-density developed residential is 10,000 square feet per lot.
That's the zoning, the RSSL is 10,000. Yeah, the comp plan, low-density can mean anywhere from that 5,000 square foot up to, you know, your 10,000, even up to an acre sometimes.
I, I think, just to, just to add a comment, I think what I find interesting about the comprehensive plan is if you look at the corner just immediately south, that, that was projected to go and recommended to go as commercial in the comprehensive plan. So this is asking for commercial zoning just a little ways up, and I think some of the things that have been brought up this evening about the development that is to the east, it is residential, single-family, small lot. It's adding density in the area, so I think to, to think that there would be commercial going in that would support and be of service, neighborhood service, neighborhood commercial for that, those incoming residences within comprehensive plan and matters that we discussed on this commission. Any other questions for staff? Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioners, any discussion amongst ourselves, or perhaps somebody is thinking of a motion? Comment?
Well, given that it seems to meet a need, especially with the neighborhood coming in, it's pretty dense, and I'm confident that they'll do a good job of making it look nice. So I would make a motion that we accept the findings and recommend the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented.
Second up.
I have a motion and a second to approve as presented. We'll now vote. We have five in favors, that's unanimous. That will move on to the city council. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have the meeting summary review and possible action for the meeting summary of April 19. Any additions or corrections? Anyone ready to make a motion to approve? A motion to approve is submitted.
Second.
A motion is second. We shall now vote. Four yes, one abstain, that motion passes. Next item on the agenda is presentation by special counsel of the city attorney's office regarding state statutes, the Stillwater Code of Ordinances, the zoning code, and cases of interest on planning and zoning matters.
I'm super excited about this one. You remember that last week, I feel, I know, I, I fielded a number of questions about RELIPA. So just by way of refreshing your recollection, RELIPA stands for the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. It's a federal law that, among other things, protects religious institutions from unduly burdensome or discriminatory land use regulations. And you may remember that one of the, the avenues for inmates to assert their religious beliefs actually can be brought under RELIPA. And I found kind of an interesting one, although I, if, if the city attorney is listening, I did not bill the city of Stillwater for it because it was just interesting case where a gentleman that was incarcerated, apparently there was a sweat structure, and he felt as if he was being denied access to express his religious beliefs because they precluded him from using this, this sweat facility. And so, anyway, I thought that was a little bit interesting. So the, the court got an opportunity to, to discuss his sweat at length. I can't remember exactly how the court came down because it's not really pertinent to what we're doing, except it was just a little bit interesting. So what I did do is, as always, when I'm looking at cases, is I start with the 10th Circuit Court of Appeals because the 10th Circuit is what is in charge of Oklahoma. And there have actually been a couple of RELIPA cases decided by the 10th Circuit, and one involved Grace United Methodist Church in the city of Cheyenne. And I am going to read the facts because as always, you know, when you're doing planning and zoning, the facts matter. Grace United was the owner of real property in a low-density residential area in Cheyenne, Wyoming. It was deeded to Grace United in 1956, subject to neighborhood covenant, and had been operated as a Methodist church since that time. In March of 2001, Grace sought a license from the city of Cheyenne to operate a 100-child daycare center, which I thought was a little bit optimistic on their part, but that, that's okay. The proposed facility would provide care from children newly born to age 13, and it would be open to the public regardless of religious affiliation and would operate 18 hours a day from 6:00 AM until midnight, seven days a week, which I'm sure is probably what got a lot of the, the neighbors upset. But because the applicable Cheyenne zoning ordinance prohibited any entity from operating a daycare with more than 12 children in this zone, the development director denied the license. And for her trouble, she got named individually in this lawsuit. So what happened was, they appealed the denial to the Board of Adjustment because in Wyoming, that was the process that they followed. So the Board of Adjustment reviewed it, and they said, we, we agree with the denial. We're not going to let you operate this 18-hour-a-day daycare, and it doesn't have anything to do with the fact that you're a Methodist church. So Grace United filed a lawsuit against the city of Cheyenne and, like I mentioned, the development director, keep that in mind, alleging that the board's decision to deny the variance violated RELIPA. Now, they also threw in a First and 14th Amendment claim because if you're bringing a federal lawsuit, a lot of times what you'll do is you'll throw all sorts of things in there, and so they did this. But, but basically, the crux of their argument was that the denial of the permit and the city's action in denying the permit prevented it from engaging in religious instruction on its property. So the church essentially took the position that you, that you should grant us this because we want to, to instruct our religious doctrines on this. Unfortunately for the church, the, the problem was that they, they accepted people from all faiths. The workers that worked there weren't necessarily members of the church or indoctrined, indoctrined into the Methodist faith. So one of the things, and it was super interesting because the court, what it did is, some of the things that it talked about was a law's neutral so long as its object is something other than the infringement or restriction of religious practices. And the court actually looked at a couple of other different functions that had been the subject of RELIPA violations. So like in one case in Chicago, the court said, okay, it doesn't violate RELIPA if a church, i- if a body, in this particular case, the city of Chicago, required a special use permit, just, do we do that? Yeah, I think just like we do, to operate churches in commercial and business areas. Another one had to do with First Assembly of God of Naples, Florida. That came out of the 11th circus, circus, excuse me, circuits. That's the night, the ninth circus is what I'm thinking of. But that had to do with a, the First Assembly of God, what they wanted to do is they wanted to run a homeless shelter. And they also took the position, you know, okay, by denying us the ability to do this, you are infringing on our beliefs and our desired mission to these individuals. And then there was another one that talked about how churches and other nonprofits couldn't be located within the, the central business district. But the thing is, this is what the court really, really got down to when they evaluated all of those uses that were sort of extensions of the, the church's primary mission. all of those uses that were sort of extensions of the church's primary mission, is they said, "So long as you are applying your zoning regulations to all other entities in a similar way, then it's not going to violate RELIPA." So one of the things that the court did talk about, and it actually kind of delved into the zoning regulations, and what the court said is, "If your zoning ordinances promote the health, safety, and welfare of your citizens, if that whole objective is to lessen congestion in the streets," and that certainly was a concern of the nearby residences, when you're talking about adding that many kids coming in, "if an objective is to create an attractive living and working environment, to prevent the overcrowding of land, to facilitate provisions for transportation, water, sewage, parks, and other public requirements, if your codes meet all those objectives, and you apply them equally to everyone, then you're going to be okay." So now, it was interesting, because the church, of course, you know, when you're advancing this type of litigation, you go with your strongest argument, and in this case, the church is saying, "You know, we think that the city denied this request because of our religion, because we're Methodist, and the court said, you know, there's really no evidence of that. So we think that regardless of what entity wanted to put a daycare here, we believe that the city's actions supported it." But it's just such a great reminder that, you know, at the end of the day, when you're making recommendations to the city council, you know, as long as you fall back on those articulable concerns, then, you know, health, safety, welfare, traffic, comprehensive plan, all those sorts of things, then really, you're going to be okay. So, anyway, I appreciate the opportunity to excitedly deliver this information, and next time, I'll, I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'll pick a new topic for the next one.
We appreciate it, thank you so much. It is interesting, and I think that the advice that you give us, even if it's not concerning specifically RELIPA, just keeping in mind health, safety, welfare, traffic, comprehensive plans, just those basic facts, it's very helpful.
Ms. Childs, I have a request. Do you think you could find a case that falls under the guise of a rejection based on arbitrary incompetitiousness?
Absolutely.
Rock on.
All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is miscellaneous items from staff, planning commissioners, or city attorney for discussion and possible action. The only item listed is that the next planning commission meeting is May 17. The last item is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Without objection, move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, we shall now vote. Motion passes 5-0, we are now adjourned.